Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth Planning Commission Work Session, Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. Ms. Chopp, would you like to get us started?
Sure. Welcome, everybody. Our first case is UP-2321, a shipping container slash chassis storage yard proposal for 3015 Airline Boulevard. Valerie is the staff coordinator, and I'll let her give you a brief discussion of what's going on with that case.
Okay, yes. So underneath your agenda, you should have gotten a memo, and it just basically determines that staff is recommending that we -- or this application has been withdrawn. The applicant was given a due date after its fourth deferral of May 31st to provide the required traffic impact analysis to complete the application, and it was not submitted as of yesterday. So the use permit's been withdrawn. The applicant is going to be refunded, and if we are to hear it again, it'll be because he has submitted a new application and basically gone through the process over again.
Just a question, does that refund include the legal?
That's all it is. The use permit application fee is for the legal advertisement, so he's going to be getting that back.
Even though we advertised it a lot?
Yes.
I guess nosy more than anything. I have no opinion. Okay.
That's our way of...
Policy right now.
Yeah, that's our way of withdrawing the application.
Right. It's like in a good faith type. Yeah, it's not going forward. So, okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect. Ms. Malzone, Julie?
Sure. Okay, our next case is UP-2404, also Valerie Malzone, as the staff coordinator.
Okay, good afternoon, planning commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I'm Valerie Malzone. I'm a senior planner with the City of Portsmouth, and this application before you today is a use permit to operate a shipping container slash chassis storage yard at Zero Coast Guard The subject property is approximately 30.2 acres in size and is zoned industrial, or IN. The site is currently vacant and heavily wooded, except for tidal wetlands extend along the northwest border of the property. The property is located within the AE flood zone in the resource protection area of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area. In accordance with the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay Ordinance, the site-specific boundaries of the resource protection area, shown on the right, were determined by the applicant and approved by the Planning Department in February 2024. The surrounding area consists largely of industrial uses. Port facilities zoned industrial, or IN, are located to the south, east, and west of the subject property. A United States Coast Guard Base zoned conservation, or C, abuts the subject property to the northeast. A tributary of the Elizabeth River runs along the property to the northwest. Churchland High School zoned general residential, or GR, is located across the creek to the northwest. The applicant proposes to develop and operate a shipping container slash chassis storage yard on the property at Zero Coast Guard Boulevard. An approved use permit is required for shipping containers slash chassis storage yards within the IN zoning district. The applicant originally submitted two conceptual site plans for consideration with this application. The first conceptual site plan, one, is 10.8 combined acres in size. It consists of two storage yards with 310 total truck parking spaces. The proposed storage yards are accessed via three entrances along Coast Guard Boulevard, each monitored with an eight-foot-by-14-foot guardhouse. The proposed storage yard is completely enclosed with chain link fencing. The proposed development depicted in this site plan does not encroach into the resource protection area. Conceptual site plan two has been removed from this use permit application request by the applicant on May 30th, 2024. Conceptual site plan two depicted a single continuous 14.4-acre storage yard that significantly encroached into the resource protection area. The proposed land use within the resource protection area would not be permitted, allowable, or exempt unless otherwise authorized, with the Chesapeake Bay exception granted by Planning Commission. With the removal of conceptual site plan two, staff is recommending the approval of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as appropriate for heavy industrial uses. While the proposed use does not appear to be the highest and best use of the property, the proposed use conforms to the surrounding land uses and will not significantly impact the surrounding traffic network. The proposed use does not directly produce any jobs, and the proposed development will remove a significant amount of trees and greatly increase the amount of impervious surface within an environmentally sensitive area that is already prone to flooding. Although, with the removal of conceptual site plan two, the applicant has minimized land disturbance within the resource protection area. To date, the Planning Department has not received any public comments regarding this application. This concludes my presentation, and I will now stand by for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, I have a question. Did we ask PPIC to weigh in on this? I'm just curious.
I'm not familiar with what is PPIC.
The court industrial commission?
No, we did not, no.
Okay, I would have thought that they would have had an interest in knowing about this project.
I got you.
You understand why I'm asking the question?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Julie?
Okay. Our next case is UP-2405, a request for an event space banquet hall in the downtown area, and the staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone.
Hello again. I am Valerie Malzone. I'm a senior planner with the City of Portsmouth. The next application before you today is a use permit request to operate an event space slash banquet hall at 465 Dinwiddie Street. The subject property is approximately 2,500 square feet in size and is located in the downtown D1-T5 zoning sub-district within the downtown design overlay district. The property currently contains a one-story, approximately 2,500-square-foot commercial building that was constructed in 1953. The property is partially located within the AE flood zone. The surrounding area consists largely of commercial uses with restaurant uses predominating. Single-family, two-family, and multifamily residences zoned historic limited office, or HLO, are located to the north of the property within the Old Town Historic District. Commercial uses, religious institutions, and multifamily residential uses zoned downtown D1-T5 surround the subject property to the south, west, and east. The applicant is proposing to operate B-rail event space as an event space to be rented for a variety of private functions. Event space slash banquet hall uses require a use permit within the D1-T5 zoning sub-district. The applicant plans to cater its services to families and small-to-mid-sized companies within the Hampton Roads area, providing a venue for events such as small weddings, baby showers, birthday parties, networking events, holiday events, and other community events and activities. The proposed interior site improvements include removing walls to create an open floor plan, replacing flooring, and upgrading the kitchen and restroom facilities. The proposed 1,720-square-foot event space includes a bar, a kitchenette, and one restroom. The event space will be available to rent every day of the week from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Proposed exterior site improvements include painting the exterior of the building, replacing exterior lighting, installing security cameras, and placing exterior signage above the entrance of the existing building. The applicant is currently pursuing a certificate of appropriateness, or COA, from the Downtown Design Committee, which will be required for the proposed exterior work within the downtown design district. I believe that meeting's tonight. No parking is provided on-site or required by the zoning ordinance, but the property is located within short walking distance of the middle street parking garage in an area where on-street parking is commonly available. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates 465 Dinwiddie Street as downtown mixed-use. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of the applicant's request with the recommended conditions. The proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan and is appropriate in this location. The proposed use will utilize a vacant structure and will strengthen the downtown area as a center for activity. To date, no public comments have been received regarding this application, and I will now stand by for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Commissioners, any questions? Ms. Malzone?
I don't... I'm trying to think of how to phrase this question. I'm noticing more and more of these popping up, and I just worry that we're getting a new version of the car wash, where there's tons of them popping up. All you need is a small brick and mortar, and you can turn it into an event space. I know historically we've had issues with entertainment facilities, and these borderline on an entertainment facility. That being said, I'm very much in favor, especially as someone who does a lot of events, just from both a legal and a precedent standpoint. Where do we see these fitting with regards to continued growth and preventing them from just becoming the next new thing that pops up overnight everywhere?
Right. What, the department sort of tracks that, like economic development maybe?
Yeah, I agree with you that we are seeing a lot more event space banquet halls, and yeah, I'm curious what, if there's that many events that, you know, that support that. But, you know, typically, the, you know, we don't look at the market for, you know, that. And so, our, so at least my viewpoint is if someone is proposing it, then they're, you know, their intent is for it to succeed and, you know, provide a good business for the city. On that, I also don't, it doesn't create a ton of jobs either, so that's something to consider. But I think that you bring up a good point that staff should look into further and possibly research and coordinate with the economic development department to see if they have insight that they could share.
I mean, I will say, I'm a huge fan of the fact that they are going into usually abandoned locations, and they're improving the facade, they're providing some traffic to it. I mean, we have one in Victory Crossing. There's one over, I don't know if it's on the Portsmouth side, Churchland is where I was thinking about.
Two.
And it's a result of Norfolk Strip policies with amplified music and some things like that. So they're shifting here, and that's also why we see a heavy influx of restaurants over the last two years, because we are a much more business-friendly community when it comes to those establishments, which is a huge plus. I just want us to make sure that we keep, say, aware of it.
I agree. And Rhonda and I, Ms. Russell and I, did discuss that recently, so we'll definitely look into it further.
I will say full disclosure, one of my organizations is actually looking to purchase a building to do something similar, but also for meetings. So I just think it being known will be helpful as well, as other businesses might be in the process of saying, hey, let me do this as well.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
I would like to comment. You have to be careful, because the way the codes are now and the regulations are now, obviously, we can't deny anyone the right to pursue a project just because we may think that there are too many of that same type of project. It's free enterprise, so, I mean, I know you all know that, but I think it's always worth making a statement that we don't have the right to exclude unless we've got the regulations standing behind us.
Thank you, Commissioner Jiggetts. Anyone else? No? All right. Thank you, Ms. Malzone. Julie?
Yes. Okay. Our last case for today is also, or is another shipping container slash chassis storage yard, which we're also seeing a lot of. So I'm the staff coordinator for this one. This use permit application involves an approximately 7.04-acre portion of the 96.5-acre CSX-owned property at Zero Sire Road within the industrial zoning district. The eastern portion of the property contains a gravel laydown area, and the remainder of the site is mostly vacant with a few areas containing non-tidal wetlands. The subject area also includes several bridge piers from the Martin Luther King Expressway that crosses over the property. The applicant proposes to utilize the property for long-term storage of shipping containers and chassis. North of the site are rail lines and the associated railway right-of-way, which is the remaining portion of the 96-acre property that is known as Zero Sire Road. West of the property is an industrial operation that is zoned IN. To the south is a city-owned stormwater BMP, and then to the east is an industrial facility that's also zoned IN. Further east across South Street are residential single-family dwellings that are zoned multifamily urban residential, or URM. The applicant proposes to develop the property with the capacity to accommodate up to 240-foot-long and 20-20-foot-long chassis with containers. The project narrative specifies that any shipping containers will be stored with the chassis and will not be stacked. The applicant clarified that the proposed use is an intermodal support facility, where typically just the chassis will be stored on the site, and that relatively few daily trips are necessary. The proposed use will not be an intermodal shipping facility, which I believe is most of the previous shipping container cases that we've heard have been a intermodal shipping facilities, which involve daily truck traffic from incoming and outgoing container ships. The conceptual site plan enlarged on the slide shows includes concrete barriers to protect the MLK Expressway Bridge Piers during the construction as well as during the operation of the shipping container slash chassis storage yard. The existing gravel laydown area will be demolished in order to develop paved asphalt access aisles and storage spaces. The storage area will be enclosed with a green or black vinyl-coated chain link fence. Two gated vehicular access points are proposed on Columbus Avenue and an additional access way on South Street. The applicant has no plans to construct a building on the site. In addition, no onsite employees are anticipated due to the nature of the use. The applicant indicates that the proposed use does not require any designated off-street parking, as there will be no onsite employees or buildings. And also, in lieu of providing video surveillance, that is typically recommended as a condition for uses that require a use permit, the applicant proposes to utilize CSX railroad police to perform periodic inspections and surveillance of the site to ensure that criminal activity is not taking place. The applicant submitted a Virginia Department of Environmental Quality record that authorizes .09 acres of non-tidal wetlands to be permanently impacted by the development, and the application also included documentation of easements agreements between CSX and the Virginia Department of Transportation, or VDOT, for the overpass and bridge piers that are on the property. With the recommended conditions, staff recommends granting the applicant's request for a use permit for the development and operation of a shipping container slash chassis storage yard on a seven-acre portion of Zero Sire Road. Although the proposed use is not expected to create any jobs or significant capital, the development with the proposed condition does accommodate an active use in an otherwise vacant area. It's consistent with the immediately surrounding land uses and is not projected to negatively impact the surrounding residential uses or the existing traffic pattern. To date, no public comments have been received, and I'm happy to answer any questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Commissioners, are there any questions?
I do have one question. Are the pier protectors going to remain?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding is that they're intended to protect the piers during construction as well as throughout the operation.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? No? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chopp.
For new business, our, the City of Zoning Administrator, Trevon Boone, is here to go over the cases for the upcoming BZDA meeting.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. I am Trevon Boone, zoning administrator here for the City of Portsmouth. Good afternoon. We have two cases to bring before you for informational purposes only that will be heard on June 26th before the Board of Zoning Appeals. The first is from Altoonsa Jackson at 4592 George Washington Highway. He is requesting an appeal of a notice of violation in regards to using chassis storage containers as fencing to enclose a deck and interior of the property. So that would be our first case that will be heard on June 26th. The second one is a variance request submitted on behalf of Brian Mickens for 208 Allen Road, and that's for a variance to construct a single-family dwelling and requesting yard setbacks from, setbacks, excuse me, from 25 feet to 10 feet in order to do that prior to pursuant Chesapeake Bay exception. So those are the two cases that we have coming to the Board of Zoning Appeals on June 26th. We'll stand by for any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, just to point clarity on the first one. I'm just making sure I'm thinking of where I'm thinking. So it's behind the building, they're using it as to make a patio, basically.
Yes, including the patio, storage containers.
Okay. I have a question. Commissioner Jiggetts?
And it's not related, per se, but when we do the permits request and everything, my understanding is there's a designation of the amount of time, if it's from Monday through Saturday or whatever, for construction purposes, if it's a, if it's a project in a residential neighborhood. Are these construction-type projects allowed to operate heavy equipment on Sundays?
Don't, I'm not for certain. I would have to look that up, and I said it, but yes.
And at your convenience, just let me know. It's a personal question. Having to do with my neighborhood.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
That I would like to know the answer, please.
Thank you. Any other questions? None? Ms. Chopp, do you have anything else?
No. Ma'am? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will meet in the chambers at 1:30.
Oh, wait a minute. I would like to welcome Greg Coleman. I believe that he is standing in for the city manager, Carter, and we welcome him to our meeting.
Welcome, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Anything further?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it all. Greg Coleman?
Gregory Coleman, yes, ma'am.
Gregory Coleman, because we have to make sure, because people are tuning in, and you are in the city manager's office?
I'm actually Director of Human Resources.
You're Director of Human Resources now. Pleased to meet you. I'm Commissioner Jiggetts.
Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you. Okay. If there's nothing further, then we will meet again in the City Council chambers at 1:30. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, June 4th, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary?
I'm sorry. All right. Wait for a minute. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Five members of the Planning Commission are present.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the April 2nd, 2024 Public Hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion. Can you turn your microphone on?
I will make the motion with one addendum, please, and that would be on page 14, line 21, and it should read, "Isn't that what I just said?" That is what the statement should read, and that is page 14, line 21. And it was when Mr. Walker was speaking, and that's at the last meeting.
Okay.
It just says that. That's all it says, and that's not what I said.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Jiggetts.
You're welcome. With that, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner G. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
First and a second to approve the minutes with correction on page 14, line 21, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of five to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their July 9, 2024 Public Hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item, which was deferred from the February Planning Commission meeting, is UP-23-21 Hattonsville. Leaf Burner requests a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 5.4-acre parcel at 3015 Airline Boulevard in the light industrial IL zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by Burner Properties 3015 Airline LLC, and is further described as Tax Map 574, Parcel 3. The staff coordinator, Valerie Malzone. This application has been withdrawn. However, we will have a public hearing, so if there is anyone here who would like to address this opportunity, this application, this is your opportunity to come forward, and you will have five minutes to speak. Appearing to be non-Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? No? Okay. Thank you. We need a motion and a second to withdraw UP-23-21.
I make a motion to withdraw UP-23-21.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you. We have a motion and then a second to accept the withdrawal, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero. Our next item, UP-24-04 Churchland. Matt Mider and Ken Rodman request a use permit to operate a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 30.2-acre parcel located at Zero Coast Guard Boulevard in the industrial IN zoning district. The property is owned by Virginia Holding Corporation and is further identified as Tax Map 719, Parcel 3. The property is owned by Virginia Holding Corporation and is further identified as Tax Map 719, Parcel 11. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for heavy industrial use. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name is Ken Rodman. I work with VHB Incorporated, located at 4500 Main Street, Suite 400, Virginia Beach, Virginia. This property currently is zoned industrial, and the intended use is for a chassis and trailer storage yard. It's a total of about 30 acres, 10 of which are going to be impervious surface for the storage yard itself. We remain completely out of the RPA-sensitive areas of the property, as well as the wetlands. The total land disturbance is a little over 12 acres, and that additional acreage is for the stormwater management that's required for the facility. The layout, as it constitutes, has three entrances, two for the, I'll say, the northern half, the larger part of the yard, for entrance and exits that will be controlled by security gate, then a southern piece, also with its own security shack and security gate. At request of the city, the property will have video surveillance for security at all times. Per the city engineer, when we met with the city initially, they requested that we do a traffic impact analysis. We went out and did a traffic impact analysis and found that it has no adverse effect on the neighboring streets. We went and met with the Coast Guard on base to field any concerns that they may have and to get some input in the traffic data as when their peaks were, so that we would make sure that we were consistently representing them, and that was a very productive meeting. We came out of that meeting with no issues presented to us from the Coast Guard. The benefit of this, this yard in proximity to Virginia, Virginia International Gateway is that it potentially removes a lot of the trucks that we see stacked up on Wild Duck Lane, right? If they actually have a place to go park in between runs or a place to set containers in between runs, hopefully, we can get them off of Wild Duck Lane. And then, lastly, the project, as it constitutes right now, we're asking for the conditional use permit for the container storage yard and trailer storage yard, but that's just a short-term play. Our long-term play, hopefully, is to find a tenant where we would be able to come back in front of the city and present a potential warehouse situation here and convert the property from a container storage yard into a warehouse distribution-type center that would, you know, be right outside of the gate and you would think would be extremely attractive to the port. I'm here with the rest of my engineers. Barton Hunter, who is a representative of the owner and development team, are here to answer any questions you have, and I'd like to, if you can, save my last two minutes for any potential rebuttal if opposition is brought up. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Coleman?
Mr. Rodman, I just have a question, just more out of curiosity. The, the security that you're going to have there, what would be their job? Are they, are they checking, like, is there a logbook checking people in and out, or is it just for trespassers? What, just what would be the operation of the security there?
I'm going to call to the owner. Is standard security to check people in and out of the building?
Sir, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the, please, thank you.
Barton Hunter, I'm with the Inlight Real Estate Development. We are part of the application. Address is 820 Ponte Vedra Beach, Florida. For the security, we put security gates, and in some of our yards, we also put security booths, and that is for manpower if we need the booths. Most of the security we're talking here is probably gates and camera system. At the city's request, they asked if we could put up cameras that would have loop system and would hold the information for 30 days. We have agreed to that. That is perfectly fine. We do that at all of our facilities, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Rodman and Mr. Hunter.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-04. I do have two registered speakers. The first speaker is Chris Gullickson. You have five minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the Portsmouth Planning Commission. My name is Chris Gullickson. I'm Director of Development and Transportation Policy at the Port of Virginia, and my business address is 101 West Main Street, Suite 600, Norfolk, Virginia, 23510. I first want to say thank you, this opportunity. I also want to commend the city's planning staff for their professionalism, thoroughness, and accessibility with this application. I come before you today in support of a use permit to operate a shipping container and chassis storage yard on Zero Coast Guard Boulevard. The Port of Virginia has experienced record container volume growth in recent years, while maintaining strong relationships and operational excellence for our existing customers, yet we're also attracting new business daily. This growth would not be achievable if it weren't for the previous expansions there at Virginia International Gateway in Portsmouth. In addition to the expansions that have happened at Vig, the port is undertaking a $1.4 billion capital improvement program as we speak, and this program includes the widening and deepening of our shipping channels to 55 feet deep and allowing for us to enable handle two-way transit of ultra-large container vessels, and I can tell you there's one today at Vig being worked as we speak. This ongoing shift within the global supply chain from west coast ports to east coast ports is happening as we speak, and with that brings new opportunities like reshoring and e-commerce. This is all generating significant outside-the-gate interest. Interest in high-quality supply chain support facilities, like what is being proposed today by Inlight. This project will enhance the continuity and movement of international freight into the domestic supply chain. Additionally, this project really is able to leverage the strategic location of the site adjacent a world-class shipping container facility like VIG. This project really also supports an elevated level need of resiliency within the supply chain. We've all experienced the disruptions that have occurred over the past few years, and this type of storage facility does enable for additional resiliency to move critical freight into our domestic supply chain. And that's a message, I can tell you personally, I carry forward on a monthly basis, as the Port of Virginia has a standing seat there on the Portsmouth Port Industrial Commission. And in front of the PPIC monthly, that's a message that I know I repeat frequently, but it's one that I think carries one of strength and importance, because Portsmouth is a critical node within the Port of Virginia's network. We have two facilities here within the city. There's been tremendous economic growth and opportunity that's derived from both Vig and obviously activities taking place there at PMT. And so, again, this type of new investment coming into the city on a site that is industrial and conforms to some of the surrounding uses you see there at Zero Coast Guard, again, it's an exciting opportunity. The Port of Virginia, the city of Portsmouth is poised to capitalize on this continued growth within the supply chain industry, and this port supports this development, and request your approval of today's use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Franklin Arc Bart. You have five minutes. Oh, six. Okay, sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-04. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name, and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Captain John Dewey. I'm the commanding officer of Coast Guard Base Portsmouth. We're the adjacent neighbors to this proposed development, and I'm sure that, that Mr. Rodman met with someone in the Coast Guard, but the Coast Guard is a large matrix organization, and I'm not sure that we met with all the right people in the Coast Guard. But I wanted to get up and express just a few concerns about this proposal, and I look forward to working with the city and with the developer as, as we work on this development. But the Coast Guard has three leading interests that I'd like to see addressed as we move forward on this project. One is the physical security of the Coast Guard base. We have an interest in making sure that the development doesn't undermine or hinder the security of our facility. The second is access to the Coast Guard base. Coast Guard Boulevard is the sole ingress and egress point for the base, and we're interested in making sure that this development ensures that we have unhindered access 24/7 so that we can continue to provide our emergency response services to the nation under the missions that Congress has required of us. And then, finally, as a good neighbor, we want to make sure that everybody is safe. And adjacent to this property line, we have a small arms firing range and some magazines where we store ammunition. Those magazines have a blast radius. That blast radius extends beyond our current property line into a portion of this proposed development, and our interest is making sure that whatever we build there or whatever we do there is safe, taking into consideration the blast, the potential blast radius from those magazines. And those are three interests that we have as we work together to pursue this proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-04. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be non-Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant or? Commissioner Jiggetts? No.
No. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. If the applicant would please approach the podium again, I'd...
Mr. Rodman or Mr. Hunter?
Whoever can answer the questions, fine.
Depends what the question is.
And this is just from my perspective. Do you have any minority shareholders in your company? If he could come to the podium, too, apologize for the inconvenience.
Shareholders, we do not, but we have several minorities that work for the company.
I'm sorry, I did not hear you at all.
Shareholders, no, but we do have several that work for our company and represent our company and in partnership with our company.
Okay, but no minority shareholders?
No minority shareholders.
And this is in, because it's the Virginia, the name of the company is?
We are the ground leaseor. The property is owned by Norfolk Southern, so we will be leasing the property to them to develop this yard.
From, say that one more time.
From Norfolk Southern.
From Norfolk Southern, you'll be leasing?
We're leasing the property.
The property, and the, and the corporation that's leasing it, the name of your corporation, again, is?
Is Inlight Real Estate.
Inlight?
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Bo. That's, that's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner G?
Captain Dewey, I actually had a question for you, and I apologize that, that you returned to your seat, sir. Thank you for the great points you made. With all you said, I never really got the gist of whether you were in favor or not in favor of the, the development.
We're, we're neither in favor or opposed to the development, and we have no interest in, in unnecessarily hindering any development that either an applicant or a local government sees fit to pursue. We're interested in being good neighbors, and we're interested in making sure that, that our interests are met, and some of our interests are essentially national security interests, so that they're not negligible. And it's something that we need to work on together to make sure that we take care of these important matters. It's, it's an opportunity to work together. It's, it's not something I think that we need to be either argumentative or contentious about.
Thank you, sir. As someone who's previously done base security, trust me, I definitely understand. Just want to make sure that myself and my other fellow commissioners were clear. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey.
Wait a minute. Hold on, sir. Hold on, just one minute. Go ahead. You've already been up here, so if you just give us one second, please. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions? No? Okay. If I may, Ms. Malzone, do you have anything, did you look into, did staff look into Mr. Dewey's concerns? The three things that he pointed out, were those addressed? Are you aware that?
As of, we were not aware of those concerns up until right now. They were sending an adjacent property owner notice, and this was the first time we heard of those concerns, so they were not reviewed in conjunction with this conceptual site plan yet.
Okay, thank you. Can he come back?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Mr. Rodman, correct, or how?
I realize I got the names of the folks we met with. We met with Commander, U.S. Coast Guard Base Portsmouth, Juan Hernandez. We met with Petty Officer Juan Michael Goins, and we met with Chief Petty Officer Dana Santori. Were the three folks we met with. We were told that, that the commander was right there.
Sir, if you could turn around so that...
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You want me to repeat that?
Please.
Okay. When we met with the Coast Guard, we met with Commander, U.S. Coast Guard Base Portsmouth, Juan Hernandez. We met with Petty Officer Michael Goins and Chief Petty Officer Dana Santori. We were told when we reached out to the Coast Guard that the commander would be the appropriate person to coordinate with. I apologize that the captain wasn't in that loop, but we're more than welcome to work with the Coast Guard on any of the concerns they have with this project.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Certainly.
Appreciate it. Madam Secretary?
Is there anyone else who would like to address UP-24-04? Appearing to be non-Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I move for acceptance of UP-24-04 with the, would it be with the updates? Because I know it was changed from the initial packet.
With conditions.
Is it with conditions? I know they removed the secondary loop site plan.
With the conditions, we were not recommending approval of conceptual site plan two, so we actually did not include conceptual site plan two in those conditions already.
Okay, perfect. So I move for acceptance of UP-24-04 with conditions.
Thank you.
A second?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion. Yes. Commissioner Jiggetts?
In reference to Commander Dewey, did I say that right? Captain Dewey? I would ask that we also include those elements of his concerns in, in the conditions, because those are serious concerns that would need to be addressed.
Point of problematic procedure, we have a motion on the floor.
And so, and I'm challenging.
Well, to, to answer the initial question, I'm, I'm not sure the conditions would be easily included without more information. So I think that if, if, if you desire for more work with the Coast Guard prior to approval of the application, I think it would be appropriate to make a motion to defer the application, and that, and that would take precedent over the motion to approve if you were to make a motion to defer. But otherwise, I don't see a way to concisely include the specific items that the captain mentioned.
That has to do with safety concerns? We can't add that to the motion? We can't add that to the motion for a condition?
I don't see a way to do it with the clarity that would be needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jiggetts. Commissioner G, you made a motion with conditions. Commissioner Coleman, were you going, did you second?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
So just so that I'm clear, are we amending the motion?
No.
Is she deferring? No? Okay. So we have a motion to approve and a second to approve this item with conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions. Our next item. Five. There it is right here. Now, there's six. Oh, no, that's just a. Okay. I'm gonna let them go. We're gonna do five. That's the. I got it. I just rolled on. Kenneth Rodriguez Castro requests a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall on an approximately 0.56 acre parcel located at 465 Dinwiddie Street in the downtown D1-T5 zoning sub-district. The property is owned by Patricia Butcher Woodard and is further identified as tax map 12, parcel 103. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use downtown. The staff coordinator is Valerie Malzone. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Department. My name is Kenneth Rodriguez Castro, and I'm the owner and operator of Bureau Event Space. I'm gonna read a quick statement to just stay on track. The use permit request for 465 Dinwiddie Street stems from a place of discovery. As new business owners, we recently purchased the location at 465 Dinwiddie Street and have been navigating and learning the curve, the learning curve of commercial real estate ownership. We were surprised to learn that despite the building being zoned mixed-use, we needed a use permit to operate our business. Our business is Bureau Event Space. It is to become a premier event location in Portsmouth. We leverage our expertise in event planning and the unique charm, event planning and the unique charm of Portsmouth. By leveraging our expertise in event planning, we desire to create a destination for the community to visit, for the community and nearby cities to come to Old Town Portsmouth. Like I said, the building is zone T5, so we were actually very surprised that we were not able to use that location for the event venue. We will offer a range of packages tailored to our clients' needs, including event planning services and decor assistance, access to our versatile event space. By customizing our packages and providing a blank canvas for our clients to create their dream events, we ensure to personalize a unique experience. We are committed to ensuring that the use of the space will not create unreasonable environmental impacts such as odor, smoke, vibrations, heat, or glare. Additionally, the noise from our establishment will comply with the city code regarding unlawful excessive sounds. To further mitigate any noise concerns, our building will include soundproof entryways. Our main goal is to establish ourselves as the premier event planning and venue rental destination in Portsmouth and building a solid reputation, delivering exceptional service, and unforgettable experiences. So we strive to consistently exceed our clients' expectations by providing top-notch event planning and expertise, attention to detail, flexibility, and tailoring packages to our clients' specific needs. Additionally, we aim to cultivate long-term relationships with clients and fostering and networking with local vendors and partners within the event industry. We plan to target customers in the Hampton Roads, including small businesses and companies for meetings and gatherings, as well as families in the local community that seek event venues. Our primary focus will be micro weddings, community workshops, baby showers, networking events, sweet 16s, youth programs, holiday celebrations, anniversaries, and many more. We strive to cater to our diverse range of customers and provide them with exceptional event experiences tailored to their needs. We will offer three distinct packages, the basic, premier, and the deluxe, each offering levels of service, amenities, and different price points. Our revenue streams will normally come from event planning, event rentals, supplementary income with add-ons that we will also offer within our packages. Additionally, we will partner with local vendors, including event planners and caterers, to make sure that every event is tailored to each client. Thank you for your consideration. So essentially, we, a quick background, I'm military, I'm in the Navy, my wife is a kindergarten teacher, and we have been living here for about eight years now, and we've noticed that at the price point that we want to offer, advanced tailored events for people who may not have a lot of money to spend $10,000 in a wedding, or a baby shower, or whatever it may be, we compromise and bought the location, first of all, because of the unique charm of the town, and we believe that we can fill that gap between service and staying in a budget. So if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Commissioners, are there any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioner Jiggetts?
I'm sorry, and your last name again is?
It's two, Kenneth Rodriguez Castro.
Mr. Castro?
Mm-hmm.
And you indicated you were in the Navy, correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And you indicated that your wife is a kindergarten teacher?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious, you all are going to, what, hire a, an event planner, manager? How are you gonna work that out?
Correct. So I am actually transitioning out of the military in September. So I'll be, I'll be full-time in the event space when it comes to marketing, event planning. I've done it myself, my wife has as well. We will be hiring in the future assistants when it comes to, as soon as we get more interest, we'll be hiring assistants as well to set up, cater, and everything else, but we will have a list, vendor list, with local caterers and companies that are local to Portsmouth, so that if anybody wants to add anything to their event, they can pick from that list, and it'll be a vetted list with local, not contractors, but people that work in the event industry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Mr. Rodriguez Castro?
Yes.
What is the maximum occupancy?
So that was gonna be a question I was gonna have for the Planning Department. They, I have it right here in the Planning Staff paperwork that I received. It's in the back, I believe. It says, let me find it, it's right here. It said 49. However, my question was the building in one of these documents, and maybe it was a confusion, it says it's 1,700 square feet. The lot itself is 2,500, the building itself is 2,000 square feet. So I was, as of this document, it says 49. I'm not sure if it was adjusted for the 1,700 square feet or the 2,000, but we would obviously get a certificate of occupancy and then find out through that, through that way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Commissioner Jiggetts?
I didn't know if planning wanted to address Mr. Castro's concern about what the occupancy restrictions will be.
The occupancy of the building will be determined by the building official when he applies for his building permit. That number that's in the comments from the building official was based upon a preliminary review of the application alone, so they were not given our staff report. It was only the application materials. They did not indicate that it was based off the square footage of the building. I'm not familiar with that. The only thing that they were able to tell us in the comment was that it was based off the fact that there was a single exit.
Okay.
Repeat that one more time, because I think that's important.
So I'm not sure how they determine, how the building official determines occupancy, but in the email, the only comment that he gave us was it's 49 based on the fact that there was a single exit of, out of the building.
Actually, a single ingress and egress. Would that be correct?
I'm trying to use the language that he used, because once again, I'm not familiar with what they use. They said single exit, yeah.
Okay. Is there an opportunity to add an additional?
Unfortunately, no. We are next to Longboards, and behind us is the Beer Garden. However, one of the reasons why we purchased, because we, we had, we're aware that depending on the square footage, if it's one ingress and an egress, it'll be a little bit tough in terms of having enough people in the space. Our location does have double doors, and they're very, they're very big. It's a big entryway, so it wouldn't be just like a regular door that you open and close. So that's why I was a little bit confused, maybe, because it is double, wide double doors. We can potentially increase that number, but as of right now, based on the report, it's 49. Based on our, on our use, we're not expecting to fit 200 people in there. It's a micro event space, and we know that it's gonna be for more intimate family gatherings.
But you are expecting to be able to accommodate more than 49 people, am I correct?
If we are allowed, yes. However, my wife and I are willing to work with the city. We understand that we are in a downtown area, and safety is number one. So we can work with that. However, if the professionals come out and they, they see the location, because nobody has been to the, to the location yet. We're renovating, we're fixing the facade, we're making it pretty much brand-new, and so maybe whenever they see it at its current location, at its current state, my apologies, they'll have a different opinion, but.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor, did you have a question?
I just wanted to know the plans for parking.
Can you turn your microphone, please?
Your plans for parking?
Absolutely. So based on the report that I read, and we can always verify, T5, there's no parking requirements. However, we will be using the parking garage that is, I know the name and I marked it down for that specific reason. It is the Middle Street Parking Garage. It is just a short walk away from the venue, so if enough people wanna, you know, if they can't find street parking, they can always park at that parking garage and just walk to the location. But in my understanding, T5, there's no minimum parking requirements.
Let's just take it down here.
Thank you. Commissioner Jiggetts, did you have another question?
I just wanted to know if planning wanted to address what the response was about the parking.
He is correct that no parking is required by the zoning ordinance for the downtown D1-T5 zoning district north of Interstate 64.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez Castro.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-05. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes
Hi, my name is Anne Glenn. I live at 447 Dinwiddie Street, and my concern, of course, is parking. We have five restaurants within a block, and parking right now is a problem. And adding, I saw on one of the applications, use permit for 80. The other thing is, the parking garage in Middle Street is a wonderful facility that nobody uses if they're more than a block away. They don't even use it for Roger Brown's. So my concern is what it's gonna do for parking, which is difficult now. Any questions?
Commissioner Jiggetts, did you have a question?
Yes, I have, and good afternoon. I think you indicated that at this point, most people don't even use Middle Street Garage, so what do they do? I'm just curious.
Park on the street. And we have, I live maybe 30 yards, and I'm representing my neighbors at 445, 449, Dinwiddie Street, and 460 and 462 on Queen Street. My neighbor, who was supposed to be here and forgot, owns the buildings on Queen Street. There's two, two townhouses. And one of her, one of her renters is leaving because of parking issues. She comes in at night, and she can't park, and it's kinda scary to be walking around the streets.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. Madam Secretary.
If there's anyone else who would like to address UP-24-05, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be non-madam chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
I would make the motion to accept the... 2405 coming before us with the conditions. I just need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a motion and a second.
Motion then second to approve UP-24-05, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions. Our last item, UP-24-06 MLK Expansion Columbus Avenue. Paul Chadler, P.E. of AES Consulting, on behalf of CSX Transportation, Inc., requests a use permit for a shipping container chassis storage yard on an approximately 7.04 acre portion of the 96.5 acre parcel at Zero Cider Road. The property is currently zoned heavy industrial IN. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for heavy industrial use. The property is owned by CSX Transportation, Inc., and the location is further described as north of Columbus Avenue, east of the northern dead end of South Street, south of an existing CSX Railway, and west of the Martin Luther King Jr. Freeway. No current tax map and parcel number. The staff coordinator is Julie Chop. Will the applicant or representative come forward and present your application?
Thank you so much. I am Randy Marcus with CSX Transportation. Business address is 4900 Old Osborne Turnpike in Richmond, Virginia, 231. This, this site currently consists of vacant overgrown gravel in an old lay-down area of our yard. We are proposing, as was said, to take seven acres of that and construct an industrial outdoor storage yard for primarily chassis and empty shipping containers similar use to what the first applicant was doing for theirs on a smaller scale. As was mentioned, this is currently zoned for heavy industrial. This would be a heavy, in, heavy industrial use. That CSX is gonna manage operations on-site through stipulated lease agreements with a, with our tenant, with a potential tenant. with a potential tenant. There will not be any employees on-site, and we will, we will periodically inspect property and ongoing operations to ensure compliance with agreements to observe site conditions. We also have regional railroad, CSX Railroad Police, who can perform periodic inspections and surveillance of the site. Our expert consultants will be happy to answer any questions beyond my expertise there. But we appreciate the support and the advice and direction of the staff, and appreciate your consideration of this, this use permit.
Thank you, Ms. Marcus.
Ladies and, okay, I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-06. I do have one registered speaker, Mr. Franklin Albar. If you come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Hi, Franklin Alarback with Murrow Chemical Company, 1510 Columbus Avenue, Portsmouth, 23704. We are neighbors next door to the property, and our concern is that when they put in the MLK connector, Elizabeth River Tunnel's no longer, doesn't maintain the ground next to the roads on Columbus Avenue. And this corner from South Street to Columbus is a very blind corner, and more trucks coming through there is gonna be very dangerous. It's already quite dangerous. Also, when the property has been leased out before for container storage for short times, we had an inordinate number of trucks coming down to the end of Columbus Avenue, which has no turnaround, and they just come flying through our gate and make a U-turn in our yard. And also, we have a, we had an agreement with the CSX some year, many years back. We have a hydrogen, liquid hydrogen tank adjacent to that property, and the road that goes in off of Columbus is not supposed to be anything west of that road because of the hydrogen tank, which you can't see on that drawing. On one of their other pictures, you could see that. And those are our real concerns. If something can be done for the traffic, then we'd be fine. But it's, it's a little bit hairy coming around that corner, coming to the end of the street the way it is now. And with more traffic, it would just be very, very dangerous. And that's all I really have to say.
Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, as soon as you said hydrogen tank, that piqued my interest. I think of hydrogen bomb. What would be your suggestion in order to prevent some type of significant event from occurring?
They just, if they didn't do anything to the west of the entry road off of Columbus Avenue. It's just, I think it's, it's like 25 feet from, from our fence line out. The way the tank was situated is 25 feet off of our fence line, and then they agreed that not to do anything there. But this was like 40-some years ago at this point.
Thank you for your, for your input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-06. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion? Commissioner Jiggetts?
Yes, from the Planning Department, did you all have an opportunity to address the concern about the hydrogen tank?
No, ma'am. I was unaware there was a hydrogen tank there.
Thank you.
Commissioners, are there any additional questions? Okay, Madam Secretary?
We're, we are in need of a motion.
This is Commissioner G. I've moved for acceptance of UP-24-06 with conditions.
A second?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
And you will be voting electronically. This item is approved by a vote of five to zero with conditions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's see here. If there's no more discussion, new business? We have no new business? Okay. Commissioners, is there any further business? Ms. Chop? Okay. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.